Ready to go? Evening, welcome to the Town New Falls Planning Board February 10th, 2014 meeting. First up, the review and approval of the minutes of the January 27th meeting. I have a motion for approval.
So move.
Thank you. Any discussion on them? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody here for public comment? No, she's just here visiting. The board report that the county planning board was canceled again last week because of the snowstorm on Wednesday, so we've missed January and February. So anything that's been up there is coming back with any comments from the staff and not the county planning board. I want to switch down to whole business, discussion on the zoning amendment for traffic and access management. I wanted to see if you had any comments on it, directions on it. I'll start it off because I wanted to pick up on what Tim brought up there. The only place we talk about pedestrian bicycle traffic is in the law is section 1F at the end. And I think I want to try to incorporate pedestrian access, bicycle access within some of these commercial sites. We don't see it. We were looking at it. We had ShopRite here last week, or last meeting. We talked about the connection with the Hampton Inn project and people getting through the wall. I think Tim was bringing up a number of issues of how to get from the sidewalk safely without running through the parking lot at ShopRite. So that's not my beef is, but I want to see how we can incorporate into the guidelines, into the process that we talk about pedestrian traffic from place to place that has access management and also within in the sites themselves. I think that's important that we know we can get from. I did talk to CBS engineer the other day, and I told him, I said, we talked about access management. I said, we talked about their parking lot, and how would they get to the pad B or pad C or the other pads that they were talking about? And I said, also show me how you can get there safely by a pedestrian to those sites. So I kind of want to get that more and more involved in our discussions and look out of getting people through and through. I haven't got the language yet or where I want to put in, but that's one of the things that I think I want to add to this in some way that we do look at, not only vehicle capability of getting from point A to point B, but also from pedestrian and bicycles to get through in the same thing. So it's least laid out. It's acknowledged. It's shown. It can be done. We're not done.
Can I make one suggestion for you to consider? The theory behind this is if you specify what needs to be in a traffic study above and beyond what's normally there, when you have a professional preparing the traffic study, consulting engineer with a large project, that's fairly typical, they're involved in the design and the preparation to bring something in. If you specify in that document that it has to include certain things such as pedestrian and traffic, bicycle access, that person will be charged with preparing something that satisfies the requirement. So it puts them on notice. You've got to put this into your traffic study. You've got to tell us how these things are going to work. There's sections near the end here on page four of 11 that talk about what things need to be in the traffic study from the standpoint of access management, traffic issues. So if we add something there that addresses the bicycle and pedestrian access in connection to joining properties, looking with the overall bike and pedestrian network, that will ask them to show us how that's going to work and design it that way so that when they come in, we don't have something to hand and say, we need to do this. We'll get at least their answer to how it's going to work.
Because I think, you know, just looking at the sites that we do have, it may not make sense to put a roadway. Physically, you don't have the room or malls, but it may not mitigate, you know, may not prevent you from putting in a walking path between the two sites or something striped, something marked so people can get from point A to point B without necessarily going out to the street also or park their car and be able to walk across the other one. So I think I want to look at that capability on these site plans and connectivity to the next one. And I don't want people to get the impression, well, if I can't build an access driveway for a car, I don't have to worry about it. And I want them to be on notice that we'll be looking at other ways of connecting from the one to the other. And to show it, just to pick up, you know, like Tim brought up, you know, show us how you get there safely. So those are the kind of points I want to get in on that and walk it up that way on it.
Is there a case, of course, with the Stop &amp; Shop Center and the McDonald's? Is Steve held down? They had some kind of stairway or something? I'm sure a lot of people would use this for going back out in 299, coming back in.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you couldn't put a connecting road between the two because of the slope of the land on it, but it shouldn't prevent you from, you know, being able to put something else there that would work or at least take a hard look at it and say why it doesn't work. Kind of going for. So let me tinker with this a little bit, the language to get in on it. That's what I kind of would like to incorporate with that. Does anybody else have comments on it? Because it is something, once we send it to the town for adoption as a section of the law, we'll be requiring for the planning board to then use the guidelines on all new projects.
With all the existing non-connectting adjacent properties that are grandfathered in, there's no way we can do anything until they make a change, propose a change.
Right. Well, that's basically what we've built. ShopRite.
And everything else, wait until you have an application.
Yeah. I mean, ShopRites come in, I want to change the facade. Well, wait a minute, we have a connection with Hampton Inn across the way. Now we got them on your side of the street. Now how do we get them to the store safely? Lay that out. So that, yeah, like I said, they're in for something or other or a facade change or incorporate some of that discussion. I just think having some, at least some markings on the parking lot, it's got to be a step in the right direction at least forward.
In California, a lot of you have islands with locks on the islands or, you know, so that an island, you cross it a crosswalk, but you have an island in between. It's a safe haven for you before you make the next cross of a parking strip. So, I mean, people always give California a hard time, but when you're out there, like pedestrian access and the sidewalks and the roads seem pretty great compared to what we have here. I mean, like they were planned, you know?
Like somebody thought about them before they built everything. Well, that's where I'm going with it. But, you know, if anybody's got any language on how we incorporate in that.
You know, one thing I would suggest you also consider is how you can be proactive in terms of coming up with a plan for, say, the 299 charter that would improve the ability to use bicycles or to walk it, but in a way that can encourage people to comply voluntarily or when they do come in. Because it's like the sidewalk issue. If you have to wait for individual properties to come in, you have no control over it. It takes a long time. You're never sure what's going to happen. And you will get the issue that, well, why do I have to do it when there's no sidewalk or else? But if you have, if you have a plan and people are given the opportunity to comply with the plan, to implement something that, you know, having bike racks up front, they can do it voluntarily. They don't have to make a site plan application. But you can then get like a coherent pattern that extends down and people will start to think they should do that rather than being, you know, only thinking about it when they come in for an application. But that requires the board, or the board in cooperation with the bike pit?
Bike pit. I was thinking of asking them for what they envisioned on 299 for that kind of, if they've worked on it or have talked about it or had something in mind on that.
Then you get sort of a critical mass of people have an expectancy that they're going to do something, they should do something, they should have. So it will be a surprise if you go somewhere and you don't find a bike rack or you don't find a pedestrian pathway between two properties instead of waiting for the next vehicle to come along.
Do we know whether Bike Pit received a draft of this?
Uh, no. I do not know. I don't think they did.
I don't know off the top of my head. I would imagine they've looked at it because it had gone on for so long, but it might, but this current iteration of Bike Pit may not have seen it. So I think it'd be worthwhile to have their input.
Well, seeing that you're one of the cohorts, what do you think? We just sent the letter to the Bike Pit chairman with the attachment on it, looking for any comments on it from a bike pedestrian point of view and look at if they've envisioned anything on 299, for instance, for improving the bike and pedestrian access between malls and things of that sort that we could take a look at and get something from them.
I think that they would definitely like to be included.
Yeah.
And have good input.
I think, yeah, rather than us try to envision something like that, give it to the guys who've looked at it a lot more than I.
You'd only need one plan.
Yeah. All right. Sounds like a plan going forward on it?
Is there any incentive a town could give for somebody doing it voluntarily before they come up for an application?
Yeah, well, let's see what they come up with. I don't know what, you know, why somebody would put in a bike rack that stopped before us for an application. But if there's some incentive from the town point of view to include these before they get a grant or something else like that, you know, people would get it that way. All right, so I'll follow this. We'll draft the letter up Friday. Just finish training and send it to the Bike Pit committee and tell them that we think access management is important. We'd like to adopt it, but we feel that we want to see some more emphasis where we can actually do something for pedestrian and bikeways, both within the malls and connecting to each of the malls on it. And them to take a look at it and to see if they have any, are they working on any plans about pedestrian bicycle along 299, for instance. And I'll tell Bill, he'll understand now. Talk to me about it if we're, we'll kick it there. Other than that, I think I'm pretty comfortable with the rest of the document and the requirements. I mean, we've, we've looked at it ad hoc. I think this just gives us a little bit more formality in what they ask for in the traffic study. So I think that's helpful from our standpoint. And again, requires us to say why we did or didn't do it, why it's there or not there, at least for the record. But if there's anything, the law is the first two pages and it's the underlined sections on it. So that's, if you have any issues with that, the rest of it is the guidelines. And what I'll try to do is lay out some spots where I think, like George said, the traffic study should include and pick up on some of this bicycle and pedestrian access management issues. And go from there. Sound like a plan? Okay. Let's say we'll handle that. Okay. I can lie on. Are you here next, next meeting?
Next meeting.
At 24? Okay. Because we'll have some other applications on it. Definitely. Thank you.
I'll hang in there. Good luck.
What I'd like to do tonight is really go over the sections that George has laid out that we talked about. And basically, it's A, sections and soils. B, geology. C, topography. G on air quality and I on transportation. And J on land use.
You want us up here, Michael?
No.
Nothing to say here.
For the time being, stay there.
We take a short break and we consult with you about the letter and you see it at 6:00 today.
Yes, I didn't open it.
I did.
Okay. All right, let's take a five-minute break.
I need this over here.
Yeah. Okay.
Look, it's my dear, full-time job. Everything is up to the town engineer. What's that? Oh, it's up to the town engineer. If you do that for me. Dave, I can handle this. Kelly had one for George also. This is all those draft papers that you guys have. I mean, you want to give it to her?
Yeah.
I redact it. He always wants to.
Peter and Mike George should buy their job. He's not in it.
I want to. 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 That's the most famous, definitely the most famous Skiver. Well, there isn't worse. There's a tour. It's very difficult. That's what they're saying. Especially the two jumps at the end. Tired. Very close. Over two minutes. Very, almost there, this is on a bird. How do you see this? It's bigger, short. I need to see that.
You seem to be fun, they have a piano.
I love that, though.
They swing at each other.
Oh, it just gives you the feeling after watching it, that you're going to walk out like every year.
The reason for the interruption is, I did receive a letter from the council, the in-house council, for the applicant, expressed concern about the participation of one planning board member at the IDA hearing that took place on the 28th. I included a copy of the transcript, and what I would characterize as an invitation for that member to consider whether he should recuse himself from participation in the application review. As you may have guessed, the one member is Mr. Rogers. I think, at this point, recusal is a matter of essentially individual conscience, unless there is a material, financial kind of conflict. And I think that would be up to the member to indicate whether or not there was a basis, in his mind, for recusing, recusing himself, and that would be essentially either a bias or prejudgment with respect to the matters before the board. And in the comments I heard, I did not hear things which appeared to reflect bias, prejudgment, but I believe it's appropriate for the member to state for the record who's view respectively.
Yeah, stating for the record, I do not have a bias or prejudgment against Wilmerite or the application before us. I would not consider anything that I've said at the planning board table or at the IDA hearing to be inappropriate or unethical. I was commenting at the IDA hearing as an individual, and everything that I said at the IDA hearing were exactly the same things that I've said at the planning board table in discussions that we've had with Wilmerite's Tom George or Camoin's Michael Endalo. All of my comments were based on information that I read in Camoin and Wilmerite's reports. And I did not torture any numbers, I merely took the numbers in Camoin's reports at face value, and I intend to continue to do that, because I've made an oath to serve the town of New Paltz. And I think, you know, volunteering and spending as many hours on this project as I have, I think I'm serving our community well, and I intend to continue to do that.
Okay, I did receive the same letter George was referring to tonight. I was at the IDA hearing also, I did hear Tim speak, and I kind of smiled at it, because that was exactly the same discussion he had when we discussed the Camoin report. So there was nothing new that he presented at the IDA that he had not, I agree with him, has not presented to the planning board before, and have discussed before. So with that.
And I would also point out, the applicant was present and did not object to his participation at the, or statements were made at the planning board.
Is it the same attorney that was present at the IDA hearing?
The in-house counsel was present at the IDA hearing. It's not the attorney who spoke on behalf of the applicant, that's Mr. Griffin from Arden Beach. This will be Mr. Daniels, the in-house counsel for Wilmerite.
Okay, but the person that sent you the letter is, the letter is from?
It is from Wilmerite, not from the, outside counsel, Mr. Griffin.
With that.
Do we have to respond to the, do we, does the planning board have to respond to the letter?
I think not.
You suggested that I make this comment publicly, and that I also respond in writing, so that's what I intend to do.
I think, you could, you would have the opportunity to make a full response and refer to the transcript, which would be beneficial for all concerned.
And I will distribute to the planning board members the letter that I received tonight. As I said, I just received it, and ink is still wet, I'm trying to use that expression. Okay. On that note, I would like to get, as I said, A, B, C, as far as we can get through it. There were a number of comments on transportation, I would like to leave that.
Want to start with A?
Yeah, let's start with A. Sounds like a plan. So, draft document that I have is draft of February 10, 2014, 10:20 a.m. Basically, this came out before, and we asked them to put page numbers on it, and.
I'm not as versatile in word as I am in word perfect. Apparently, the total number of pages is changed, changes, but the page number one stays the same.
This one is okay, yeah. Well, we're, I think he's aware of that, we'll work on that one on it. Does anybody have anything?
Well, in the first section, I mean, just for the sake of clarity, where we're talking about, in the first paragraph, provided in the IAS also valued the feasibility of developing onsite geothermal heating resources. The reports determine that the available geothermal resources are not adequate to meet the needs of the residential buildings. My take on that is, you know, we have no code that requires them to do geothermal or not geothermal, so the applicant has chosen to do geothermal in the clubhouse, and they've chosen not to do geothermal in the other parts of the building, so why does it matter whether we're talking about the reports determined? Because the way, I think that a better phrase would be, the applicant decided, as opposed to the reports determined.
The applicant determined after reviewing the report, presumably that it was not.
But, okay, go ahead.
Well, the applicant was asked to evaluate, so the applicant did evaluate, and they did do report. Do you know what exactly they did? Well, they lose it to DIS.
Okay, but he said the geothermal resources weren't there for the rest of the building, just for the.
Minus A of how this works is, there's a couple of different methods.
Doug?
Sorry?
Geothermal evaluations, can you explain how those were conducted and what they concluded?
With geothermal, you either have to, wells fairly deep into the rest of the board, spread them out across the surface at a certain depth.
Right.
And because of the amount of wetlands, wetland buffers, and what else, and we're trying to avoid, in order to put as many loops, if you will, through the project to accommodate what would be required for the housing, we didn't have enough room and depth. Cost prohibitive, and, is there an issue with soils or no? Or with hidden rock, before we got deep enough to pencil it up?
So there's two reasons that contribute, one is the inadequate.
Land surface area.
One is the.
We're to go deep.
Need to go deep.
Couldn't go deep, didn't have enough land to go spread out.
So we can clarify that in the.
Well, we did have enough to get the other piece done.
Well, the clubhouse is small, so you would have enough area there, but the buildings themselves generally would probably require acres of pipe, to go down five or six feet and spread it out down there.
And also the efficiencies that we pick up for the clubhouse, because you do have like heating components on it, with the pool and some of that stuff. The technology fit very well, also.
It just seems like, I think that's a perfectly reasonable explanation as to why you're not doing geothermal in the residential. All I'm saying is, it seems like there are many factors that are involved in that decision, it's not specific to soils, it's.
Oh, site, yeah.
I just feel like we're kind of. My understanding of this finding statement should just be like, very like, objective stuff, you know, as opposed to the applicant, you know, figuring out what their engineer said, and then we're figuring out what they say, it just should be like, you know, why are we discussing this in the soil section?
Because that's where it was in the scoping document and in the DIS, and I'm tracking those generally through the finding statement. It could certainly be referenced.
It could be in the energy section, too.
But typically, where it came up first, I have a discussion. In energy, there may be a more elaborate, or more detailed discussion. But part of it does relate, as I understand it, to the soils, but maybe it's better with geology. Or it should be mentioned there, too. The problem is, where it does touch at some point, you want to reference it there and explain.
So the idea is to keep, if it started off in soils, the conversation.
Generally, that's what's driving this. It goes there in the beginning, follow through the FEIS, and for lack of a clear, efficient means to transport it somewhere else, just put it there.
I think that explanation makes sense. I guess what I'm after with this finding statement is just more like, objective stuff, like, this is a fact, can this be mitigated, yes or no? As opposed to something that is like a discussion of, an engineer's interpretation of whether geothermal is possible for, you know, it's like, why is that in here? I don't, it just doesn't feel like it's relevant.
Again, we picked it up in the scoping, and asked it in that area, so this is kind of an explanation of responses to those scoping issues. So someone went from the scoping document to the findings that's in there, but I see a point on that.
It's a valid point, but generally what happened is, the scoping document said, tell us this, DIS was the applicant's version, it said, this is why, the FEIS was our appraisal of that conclusion in the DIS, yes or no? And then mitigation that was addressed it. So, that's why it's located here. Whether it could be located somewhere in better effect is possible, you know, it's a question of time and energy.
I don't want to belabor stuff like that, I'm just trying to.
No, no.
I'm just thinking like, also like, of an overlay of this document in general, just how to make it as objective and straightforward as possible.
I agree, I think the explanation you just got is perfectly adequate, and that should be, there was not enough surface dimension to do it.
Right.
Perfectly acceptable explanation.
And I'll follow it through to the energy section, because it really is, I think, more of an energy.
It is, that's where generally we'd see it.
Jim, wells were not cost effective.
Okay. If you see something that feels like it doesn't fit, generally, you know, it goes back to where we talked about in the scoping, because we went through each of the sections there.
Okay, I'm still not totally happy with encapsulating toxic soils. I know we've been over there a couple of times, and one of my concerns is, it's sort of been touched upon here, but not really, the explore is, what if something else happens to its side down the road? Let's say, 12 years from now, somebody decides to move to Fischell, use the old IBM campus instead. And we have all this stuff here, encapsulated toxic soil, we couldn't put residential houses there, because it's still there. It's like condemning that section forever, doing anything except the dorm. It's not an early science, but it's a solution. I know it meets New York State standards.
Well, it does, it does, it does place all the soils in concern, really, encapsulate to that, use the rest of the site, clean it, so to speak.
Yeah, but what if you went to build something, those would be forever toxic, those sections? Okay, they'll build anything.
Well, to the extent you, until, yeah, the testing and how it would be, and then if somebody wanted to build something, there's always a removal of that. You know where it is. You dive into that, and you, I think what you want to see in that is, okay, you want encapsulated, but I want to make sure I know where it is and have a mitigation plan that monitors that going forward, and such that if anybody ever, you know, got into your situation where they wanted to do something with it, you'd have some record on what they would have to do to actually utilize that.
That area.
But I guess to expand on that a little bit, we do have this section down here where we say, special attention will be given to areas where children may be expected, such as proposed faculty housing area, to ensure that contaminated soils are properly encapsulated. It just seems like we're opening ourselves up to risk there, like, why would one section be treated differently, because there may be children? And how could we even possibly do that? Or how do we even know that adults are not as at risk to contaminated soils? Like, I don't understand the distinction we're making, or why we would.
Soils are, soil ingestion by small kids is the biggest threat there.
Like when the kids eat dirt when they're playing?
What about college students?
Hopefully, yeah. Yeah, post-construction remediation projects shall be implemented to ensure that encapsulated areas are not disturbed by future construction or subject to erosion. Berms are inspected at least annually to ensure the integrity of the cover, and the separation of contaminated soils from resident and residential uses continue. So, you've identified the areas, you're going to monitor the area, to make sure that it's there, it's.
But why does it say, special attention will be given to the proposed faculty housing area?
That's where the kids will be generated.
No, I understand that.
I think you just answered that question.
But how, what type of attention would be given to that area that's different than, like, it seems like the explanation is that we're going to move all the soil and burn it somewhere else.
Without the kids, if this were a project of just apartments, it wouldn't require remediation.
It would not require any remediation based on health department requirements.
This is for mostly single-family housing developments, where this was generated at the beginning, really for small kids.
Take holes in the backyard, that kind of stuff, dig holes in the burn. That's what you probably would want to monitor.
So why would we want to box ourselves into, you know, as Peter's bringing up, that the project can only be for college housing? Because the soil has not been remediated to serve any other population that might eat dirt.
Completely remediate. I'm not following that line of thinking at all. There's been special attention given to every aspect of all of this site. Every aspect has got the same special attention. As far as I'm concerned, the sentence should say that special attention has been given to the entire site.
I think that's exactly, I think that's exactly the question I'm asking. Has special, so that's exactly, that's exactly the question I'm asking. So, has special attention been given to the entire site? Because if it has, then it would say that, and we would not have this sentence in here that says, we're giving special attention to, that's all I'm asking. Right? So what I'm suggesting is that we would delete a sentence like this. And do you understand why I brought this up? This sentence does not make sense, if that's what you are planning to do.
If you're going to say something, you say something. Special attention is necessary because of potential.
Do you even need to? I don't think so either, based on what you're saying.
We have a plan, we'll follow it.
It's a record, reflect the applicant, Tim Green. I'll delete it.
Okay.
I'm also interested, on the MS4, what it is, and how it's related to this project.
The town's an MS4 designated community now? And so part of that is, the town has to verify that the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan meets all of the state's standards. That has to be done before they can file for a notice of intent to do the construction. So until the town is satisfied that this meets all the regulations, they can't.
So, in terms of certification by the town, is it ongoing? Does the town have to get involved in ongoing, being sure that the airstorm water plant's working, as far as the town is concerned?
Yes, that's part of the MS, MS4 has to regulate what's built also.
So, so a town inspector, town engineer possibly, will have to certify that on an annual basis or periodic basis?
It's periodic. It's not anything, until there's a law that sets up a period, it's kind of a blanket. If you see a problem there, then they have to do something about it.
Okay, but they'll have to make arrangements. You have somebody do a town for you, or a town contract.
Meet the requirements. It would be inspected by the town and they would have to bring it up to whatever the requirements are. So it's another layer, I would say, another layer of regulation for monitoring that would go on. If we weren't in MS4, we would be monitoring it differently, but now that we are, we have a requirement for.
The expense that's borne by the town to do that is paid by the project.
I don't know if they've gotten that far yet.
They haven't gotten that far yet. I think it's kind of an enforcement thing with the building inspector. If there's an issue, they have to comply.
But basically, as an MS4 authority, it just gives the town another layer of control. Oh, yeah, that's a good word on it. Or more responsibility too.
Now, if that project is, if the entire project is ever taken over by the university, then MS4 responsibility of the town disappears?
No.
They're actually an MS4 themselves. The institution is an MS4 also.
But the town just, it's a state problem.
Right. They're also MS4 jurisdiction.
Yeah, but that's.
And that's, they have to take care of their own, basically.
I just, the only comment I had, I didn't know if I picked it up and I might have missed it on it, but when we talked about soil segregation covers, et cetera, it's, paragraph begins on line 34 on first page. I know we're monitoring that, but I just didn't pick it up in proposed mitigation. Did I miss it, George?
Last thing here.
No, it's.
The section that talks about bioremediation?
Yeah.
Actually, that was something I had a question about because at the last meeting we were discussing the use of compost as a tool technique to improve soil remediation. How, again, does that work?
Well, it gets mixed with the soil that has the contaminants in it. And there's a, apparently, and this was quite frankly, Eileen brought it to our attention, there is some remediation or breaking down of the chemicals that occurs by using the compost. So we agreed to do it.
When I read through the EIS, what I recall, compost being utilized for was the cover material to improve its.
Yeah.
So this is going to be mixed in with the remediation soil as well? Do I need to put something?
No, it's put, well, no, it goes on the cover. It comes in contact with the soil.
Yeah, sorry.
Are we doing that for our project?
We put in our, you know, we provided some input and we said if we, you know, if it's available to us.
Yeah, I don't think we said we absolutely would. We said if there was an opportunity and it was cost efficient or even a fucking problem or something, we were looking into it.
Yeah, in those responses to Dave's stuff, we hedged a little bit because we don't know if we have enough available to ourselves.
So about compost.
Talk about compost, too.
I know there's a lot of compost that the town is trying to get rid of at the recycle center.
We've got to bring, we've got to bring in soil anyways, so it's, it's a number one.
Let's just put in the notes that we talked about it and we have to make sure we had a valuation going forward on it. And if we know sites close by for compostable, which is known, the town is one of them. I guess I found, and tell me if I'm on the right page, when we talk about, again, the soil contamination and being encapsulated in the proposed conditions, if I flip to A7 on page three, town engineer required post-remediation sampling and laboratory analysis deemed necessary to confirm soil remediation is in the works. Is that monitoring that's going on?
That is effectively monitoring the condition that exists after the remediation effort is undertaken.
Okay.
So it shows that it has been affected.
Okay.
How does that work with, we may require in A7? It seems like whenever you say something like may require, then it's probably unlikely that would happen.
Well, it's a question of professional judgment. If the town engineer reviews the site and feels that there is, or has reason to believe that there is need for sampling to ensure that remediation is complete, the town engineer can do it. Not a mandatory process.
I think, well, I think what you would be looking for is a town engineer signing off on something that says if it does or doesn't. In other words, he's made an active decision based on something.
The town engineer.
Yeah, we should get the town engineer to come in.
Is any areas that look doubtful in certain one test?
It's obvious that it's dripping and placing.
We have testing requirements from the party testing agency in our plan, correct?
No.
Yes, dripping requirements.
Yeah, I know we're, we have mays and showers, you know, there's two different emphasis on it.
But when you're looking at, when you're looking at a site, what would jump out at you that may, make you think we should test the soil as opposed to just test, like, how do you, what's a sign that you might want to test soil?
Look at the area that was supposed to be stripped and make sure that all of that area was stripped for the sample. That it's been taken and encapsulated.
Yeah, and the other thing is.
That there's proper cover and there's also the geotech on top of it, the warning barrier.
But after that stage, let's say a year from now, how do you know that it was covered up? How do you know that it's still working? There wasn't a penetration through the plastic or somehow it's been removed and it's coming back down?
Just monitoring the plastic by the owner.
But, I mean, you remediate a certain depth of soil, correct? So if you take half of that, how would you know that you took half as opposed to all of it?
They're going to be stripping more depth than the contamination.
There's that, and then there's the fact that the soil underneath is a way of cutting and filling. So the soil even underneath that, it's the shallowest that's not taken, will be put into the deepest part of the fills. So I think, you know, the next year could use judgment to say.
Always the exercise will be in burns. Most of it's going to be covered.
Covered with new, new topsoil.
In other words, if there's a three-foot cut.
Covered with buildings and pavements.
Right. If there's a three-foot cut here and you're putting in a six-foot deep soil layer, then I think, you know, the town engineer will feel pretty comfortable that you would need to test that because the penetration of the chemicals didn't show that going down that deep. So if there's some area in question, I think that's what this is saying, then Dave could say, look, over here, I don't, I don't know if, you know, it looks like it's been disturbed, but we're just not sure. Then he could say, you know, maybe we ought to, for all our benefits, get a soil sample to make sure it's okay. But if it's an area where you had a three-foot cut, put it in a six-foot fill, then there wouldn't be a need to do that. So I think why, his judgment, along with the judgment of the professionals that will be out there monitoring, would come into play in that situation.
Normally, it doesn't penetrate past eight, two inches.
Normally, it doesn't penetrate past two inches of soil.
But the maximum?
The maximum I've ever seen has been 12 inches. And that's been really dense. It's been like an area that mixing is going on at the farm. That's really saturated.
In a tilt farm situation, because it's tilted. This is an apple.
Well, I think in our, when we eventually get up to our monitoring plan, this would be one of the lines on it and with a checkoff from the town engineer, whether he required it or not. Some positive stroke by him, but a statement that reviewed and didn't see any that was needed or reviewed and did something. So.
What's the language from the compost, again, sort of talked about and come to?
So what I think I would do or recommend is adding to A4, which talks about contaminated soils being covered with fill, add a requirement in there that the fill materials be.
Compost.
Sub-compost be in the fill material to ensure it's optimization as a medium. To the extent it's practical and available, there will be compost utilized for the soil, how would you call it, down the soil.
Capsule.
Well, you're going to have compost in the fill, cover, but you're also going to have it in the stuff underneath, I guess. It's just in the cover.
I didn't, I didn't read the info from Eileen, but was she suggesting using topsoil that was derived from compost or to mix in or actually adding like chunks of compost with the, this soil? Like, how does the?
Be mixed in.
They would be mixed, yeah.
So the actual compost gets mixed in with the contaminated soil? That's, that's the remediation process? As opposed to mixing in topsoil that was derived from compostable things?
There's a couple ways to do it. You can mix it in with the contaminated soil. I think they were, they were talking about mixing the compost with the cover soil.
With the cover, that's what I thought.
Frankly, we could remediate this by mixing just clean dirt with this until the levels get below the contaminated levels. We don't, the industry spread it out.
No, I think that makes sense too, but I think what Eileen was suggesting is that there's some sort of like, or there's some sort of metamorphosis that happens within the soil that kind of cleans it, you know, if it's, you know.
Yeah.
Rotting old orange peels.
The situation is, we don't have the amount of compost to be able to, so we're doing, we're doing the best we can with what's available.
I think that's, you know, to the extent that we can put compost with the plain fill and at that level on it and not worry about trying to remediate the soil with something that may or may not actually work, I'd rather have it buried type of thing. So.
So that's, that's what you said, just reading this document. The response to the FEIS on page three talks about what it is you're proposing to do, mixing compost.
Yes.
Into the topsoil layer. And the conclusion is compost can help accelerate the remediation of the soil underneath. Yeah. That's what the applicant's proposing to do. So I will incorporate that into A4.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like I'm belaboring this, but I kind of don't like just putting tasks in there unless like there's a reason for it. Or, you know, just saying that we're going to put compost in the contaminated soil, like, well, like a teaspoon of compost? Like, what's the ratio? Like, why are we doing any of this? Like, if they, if we, if, like, I want you to have a guideline too, you know?
Well, we're attempt, we'll attempt to use a 50/50 mixture.
So 50/50, that.
Well, I think you referenced.
Hold on, hold on.
You referenced the D C design manual. Does that have a, the D C design manuals which you referenced? Does that have, I assume that has a.
There's a, there's a kind of this that goes along with the decompression soil.
Right. That specifies what proportion of compost is optimal, and that's what you're going to do, I assume, that you mentioned. So there's a standard.
No, it's a remediation.
Over the whole remediation area.
Yeah. You're decompacting soil by the SWIP, as a part of the SWIP, and part of that is the mixing and tilling.
So we'll put in the D C reference that is in his, okay.
So then, right below that with A5, that just feels very vague and confusing to me. Like, does our building inspector really know anything about, you know, she's an excellent building inspector, but like, what does she know about geotextile fabric separating clean soil from contaminated soils and the optimal separation? Like, how do we know about any of this stuff?
If you see the textile fabric, the topsoil isn't there anymore. The cover isn't there. That's the bit, as I, well, David probably should be saying this, but as I understand it, you have topsoil, pile of soil which needs remediation or which has.
So you put a blanket on it.
You put a cover of construction and then you put down the cover of fill, clean fill, on top of it with landscaping materials, grass or whatever. So as long as you don't see that under the geotextile layer, construction fencing, whatever's separating it, you know the fill is in place. If you see obvious deterioration in the fill layer, you know that you need to remediate that.
So the blanket is a completely impervious blanket?
No, it's not. It's just the separate, it's just separating. When you see orange construction fabric.
It's like a, it's like a orange fence in your yard.
And this is laying horizontally on the, on top of the contaminated soil?
If you hit that, you know that there's some issue underneath it that you shouldn't be going further.
Well, if you see the dirt eroding off, did you see that? You know it clearly has to.
I see. So again, it seems like if you're going to grow food, you would probably want that new barrier of soil to be, to be deeper as opposed to thin.
Yeah.
So why are we putting that on our building inspector to determine if it's necessary and appropriate or, and we don't have, we don't, like, we're not, you know, the community gardens is a small part of this site, but, you know, like.
The orange construction fences are put deep in the community gardens. It's just below the topsoil layer where you encapsulate the contaminated soil.
So a minimum of one foot.
In the community garden.
Depth for food to be grown. And we're signing off that we think that that's safe based on, you were saying that the contaminated soil only goes down.
Two.
Not two, not too deep.
Remember, it goes beyond what you said. It goes to the D C and the, the D C and closer county health department guidance, where it's specifically beyond, 100% beyond what that guidance is, for growing food, for doing the remediation. So it's not just that this board is saying it. It's basing it on empirical studies that were done, submitted to this board, reviewed by your expert engineer, and reviewed by the health department and the D C during the pendency of a coordinated review. So, I mean, if we want to say all that in there, I'm all for it.
But this is just saying that we're, we're requiring our building inspector to review this process?
Yeah, there, yeah, I think, I think the state.
Let me just clarify. This is saying such other things as the building inspector, or you could say that a designated town representative determines is necessary to ensure the integrity. So.
It's going to be all done.
The specific depths that we're going to are all specified very clearly. The specific depths that we're going to are all specified very clearly at the plant's ground. So the, the town inspector isn't making, not talking about the site, but the town inspector, if that person verifies it or not, isn't making a judgment call. All they have to do is look on the drawings and say they're following the drawings and the plans that they said they would follow.
If this spot would have 12 inches of topsoil and there I've gone in and I've dug down 12 inches and I found the orange.
There's no judgment call on that. It's a, we're following the plan that the D E C blessed.
Well, maybe that's what this should say then. It should say that the soil separation is maintained as the required.
As per the contract documents.
Right, as opposed to as the building inspector determines to be necessary and appropriate. It's like, our building inspector is not measuring how much soil has been added to this geotextile fabric.
No. The building inspector is, this is an attempt to ensure that there is somebody who can account for the unanticipated events that may take place. Somebody decides they want to put a cold cellar in and they want to dig down three feet, or if you do dig down three feet, somebody comes along and says, why is that hole there? It's gotta be fixed because, and that's just saying, there may be other circumstances we didn't anticipate, building inspector or the designated representative of the town is charged to remediate that. We don't know what's gonna happen.
So we got two different ideas going on here, that's what I'm getting, hearing that. The applicant will install a geotech fabric, separate clean soil from contaminated, contaminated soil per the site plan, where it is, how much it is, et cetera. That, that will ensure the integrity of the soil separation. The building inspection, building inspector will, again, review, ensure that.
Will verify the following site plan.
Following the site plan rules.
Okay.
But she's gonna be doing that for the entire site plan? Why would you put that in in every single?
It's kind of mysterious thing. She's out there, she sees it goes down, she sees the depth of topsoil where it's measured.
The point of the mitigation measures is say something goes of concern, there's a way to address it, and this is how it will be addressed. Building inspector is gonna do these things per the site plan anyway, but this addresses, this is a track between the concern, the evaluation of the concern, and the mitigation that is identified. Respect to that particular concern.
So what happens if the building inspector has a concern? What?
She, she has the authority to order a remedy. If it's something that isn't consistent with the approved plan, you have the general authority to do that anyway. This is making clear that there's a separate secret purpose to this.
So this is just the reason we have building inspector here as opposed to general review of the site plan on every one of the issues and, well, to carry the discussion on toxic soil and contaminated soil throughout the D I S, F E I S, into the finding statement and how you're mitigating it.
Yes, the designated, you could say designated town representative. Typically would be the building inspector for something like this, but it might be Spider in some cases. Could be the public works person in some cases. So we could change it to a generic designated town representative.
We got it? All right. Moving along. Anything else on that?
You're still in the source.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. This, in the event that blasting is necessary. Now, is there any indication that it might be necessary? So why do we have big calls?
Because they've done some, they've done a fair amount of testing. Maybe they should.
There's one area in the back, I mean, it seems like the bedrock's not something that's real predictable. Possibility, pretty minor possibility.
It's a minor protection.
We hit one test, we hit rock very shallow, but because there's no rock anywhere else, the assumption is there's like a hole that we hit.
It's just a pile of rock they dug out of the.
Just closing the.
Yeah, I always feel like, I like this line in there because, again, you don't know what, and if you don't have it in there, then you got it all, it's all back again for permit and blasting and site plan.
I've seen bedrock go from 12 feet to 2 feet in like 20-foot areas.
Continuing, moving along?
Herbicides and pesticides. Under what circumstances would you use herbicides and pesticides? Let me look at line 41.
We kind of spelled it out in those responses.
It says, when necessary.
What we, this is one of those monitoring ones, Peter, with the idea that they would, their integrated pest management plan would be submitted to our town representative who would then go over it and say, okay, this is what we're planning to do this year and review it and sign off on it as, as approved, as approved or not, or necessarily may change. So we'd be monitoring the IPM. Say.
But that should be sort of the last resort to use herbicides.
Well, that's what he said, that's what the IPM would do. That's what it spells out that way, that I have to use it because. I've tried to.
And the town.
Right. And it would be like, maybe Spider would be somebody like that who would go all through it and he's on board on this integrated pest management plan, going forward on it, he would sign off it for the year, that, that's, plan makes sense, or don't use that there. So, so we got eyes on that one, that's what I'm.
If you look at the F E I S response from B M E, there's a reference to it on page three. And there's also another reference to it, which is pretty comprehensive on page 12. That's, that specifies yearly monitoring for a period of not less than three years. At the end of the three-year program, the yearly maintenance program will be presented for approval by the town's consultant. Any deviation to the program in subsequent years will be subject to the approval of the town's consultant. So I think they've attempted to incorporate the board's concerns into that process.
Anything else on that?
End of soils.
It seems like it's straddling both the soils and geology sections, just like some discussion of stormwater, or maybe I'm missing it, maybe it's in a different section entirely. George, what do you think?
There are two sections I haven't gotten to yet, stormwater and surface water and groundwater, and those will address stormwater.
Cause there's some mention of it in both soils and geology. So I don't know if we wanna only mention it in one place or?
No, I think it's, it's probably one of, it's similar to the, because the erosion effects come on the soil, the, one place it really should be at least referenced, I think.
So it's just really just a reference?
Yeah, what I would like to do, if, if I can get, when all of this is done and we've all been through it once, is to attempt to say, see groundwater discussion, you know, on page whatever, section whatever, where that's examined in detail.
Right.
It can happen one point where you talk about surface water, erosion controls and things, the detail is just referenced in other sections where.
So why don't we just, where we got stormwater, we'll just put a C-section and we'll just leave it blank there, knowing that we're going to talk about it in detail later. But if you see something like that, again, yeah, stormwater is a whole, there's a lot more than what we've just covered in this stuff.
Right, so like in the, then the dedicated stormwater section, is there like more discussion or analysis related to the neighbors to the west? So that's where that will be discussed?
Yeah. Cause that was a concern during the FEIS.
Cause I'm just, you know, we, we kind of like loosely, loosely mention it in these sections, so I'm just waiting for a more in-depth discussion.
Yeah, would be the surface water.
We finished soils?
Yeah.
Yeah, to geology?
Is there any more to make?
Yeah, I know.
What, do you want to make a loan?
Please.
We're just gonna do that, you know?
Does anybody have anything on geology?
Actually, I'd like.
That's where you get into blasting.
Yeah, I guess in, in topography, I was having trouble with, I guess it's line 53, where we're talking about the western boundary is a significant ecological resource.
Which, which?
Under proposed conditions?
Wait, hold on, keep going, Mac.
Section C, topography?
Those ones are 45.
My numbers might be messed up, but section C, topography, existing conditions is like the first two paragraphs and then proposed conditions, next paragraph. So if you go, it's like third line from the bottom of that.
That paragraph?
Paragraph.
That first paragraph?
It says significant ecological.
21 and 22.
The wooded area, okay, line 21, wooded area along the lower portion of the western boundary is significant.
Cause we're talking about.
Recycle.
No site disturbance or grading activities, obviously, no grading activities, but site disturbance, I mean, that, that seems like if we're talking about stormwater runoff and thinking about the, the applicant who was here a couple weeks ago on Cedar Ridge and he was talking about all the impervious surface that was created at Hawk Hill and the, the new dorms at Asopis and Lenape, those dorms, so then you end up with this new stormwater that goes, goes to the west where his property is on Cedar Ridge, and he's said something like 60% of the trees are dead. So how can that be mitigated in this situation? Like, it seems like, and I think Doug did a good job of explaining to us in the past how the project itself will have good culverts for managing stormwater on the project itself, but then when we have the superstorms and the water like leaves the project and then goes into this significant ecological resource, you know, how are we not compromising this significant ecological resource?
Stormwater management facilities take more than 100 years' long right now, and it retains that, so the release rate on that is actually less than what it is in its tortured condition right now, existing. So this project is not gonna contribute to anything. It's actually gonna lessen what's happening downstream from its contribution.
So even though we're creating, creating impervious surface, we're improving the runoff rates.
Slowing, yes.
Slowing it down.
Slowing the runoff.
That's, that's the idea.
We're building enough retention, retention before we get to the western, so to haul that water in to lower the rate of runoff to blow where it is now.
See, the volume reduction that's required now, that's to, in addition to the rate reduction.
Is it fair to say that the project is not directing water, stormwater onto the wooded area?
Well, it directs it to the location where the water currently goes. You have to have a discharge from the pipes.
Right.
It goes into, basically goes into the well where the water currently goes, because that's downhill.
So it's the wooded, what my, part of this wooded area to the west?
Yes.
Yeah.
Feed that, definitely.
Want to maintain.
You gotta have water there.
You want to do that because it's part of the height.
But, but the water coming off the site isn't any greater than, the rate of it coming off the site isn't any greater than it is today. So, and we're not disturbing anything on the western side on it.
And pre-treated.
Oh, yeah. And pre-treated also. It'll be cleaner, but slower, yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think when, on this one, if you read, when he writes up the water ones, the groundwater and surface water.
Spring and fall.
You'll get more of that in there, where that water's going. Anything else on topography? Did I say air, air quality? You want to do that next? Uh, uh. That came out Friday, so I just, I'm gonna jump on you guys. Yeah, well, you got no resident on second page, I'm gonna jump around and let them, you can fill in so I get it. No residential buildings are located within the construction areas except for Joe's house?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I wasn't thinking of.
And yours, sub paragraph, C D, you got a couple of Es. You got site occupancy impacts E and then indoor air quality E.
Still gotta work on automatic paragraph.
Yeah.
Put that blank in the 72.
Okay, so make F and G out there.
You're paging, that, in other words, the page numbers on it. Couple of capital G's, G1, G3, G4, G5, starts off with capitals, letters.
The proposed mitigation, I've decided I'm going to identify by the section and the number.
Okay.
So that we can be trapped in the approval condition.
I, you know, in this section where we, again, I understand that it's like the, the outline that we've used in previous documents, but, you know, we're talking about the mitigations for the traffic impact. I just don't feel comfortable with how we've described. For the traffic impact, I just don't feel comfortable with how we've described this.
Which one is that?
Under A, traffic impacts. You know, just, just any of this stuff where we're, we're talking about, it is anticipated the project residents will be moving closer, moving to a location closer to the college and therefore reducing the overall traffic of students by automobile. I, I just, you know, I feel like the initial traffic study, appendix G, you know, was, was not completely accurate because it only did a traffic study on weekdays and not Fridays and Saturdays when New Falls has traffic issues. And it was only done during April as opposed to in the fall when we have tourism issues. And I, I think another thing that's been overlooked, and I brought this up at this table before too, is what college students do is they drive from wherever they're living, and they're going to drive from this project, and they're going to park on the side streets in the village for free on Platycal Avenue, Ridge, South Side, Orchard, South Oakwood, Elting, and Maiden Lane. That's, you go there every single day, and it's got all college students parking on those streets for free. So by having more students living further away, yes, I, I, I think the college is doing a great job by coming up with a master plan where they're trying to push the parking lots to the perimeter of the college properties. But this situation needs to be mitigated where college students drive from a distance, even if they live in the village or now they're going to be living to the south in Park Point, they're going to go park on those side streets that are very close to the, the lecture centers. And that's not being mitigated.
But that's a current problem, but it's not specific to...
That's a current problem, that's going to become worse.
Well, I mean, is it a problem?
It's definitely a problem.
Well, I know they're doing it, but I, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out. If it's, you, they're taking up all the parking?
They're, they're parking in residential neighborhoods for free instead of buying parking permits to park on campus.
Right, but that's...
So there are going to be more students doing that, even if they have a, even if they have a permit to live on Park Point, they're going to drive to get closer to their classrooms. And these are the, the free parking spots that are available with the village that, where, you know, they're using residential properties to park for free. And you're going to have more of that, and you're going to have additional traffic and additional congestion, additional air quality issues because of these parts.
But if they were commuters, they would be parking in those same locations.
Right, so the commuters will still be doing it, and now we're going to have the Park Point residents doing it. You're saying there's going to be no net change, so any of the commuters...
I didn't say no net change, I'm just saying those streets are filled up now.
There are some commuters who buy parking permits. And these, these guys are not going to buy two parking permits because they're already going to be paying for a permit at, at Park Point, but they're still going to get in their car and drive closer to campus, where they can park for free.
Seems like the village should be putting some meters in.
Hmm.
They have plenty of meters in there now. Maybe they'll work.
But if it's, this is something which may be exacerbated to some extent proportionate to the number of students that are moving there, some of them may be already doing it and just coming from a different direction. But there is a remedy, which is general, and that's to either put parking meters in or to put restrictions on parking on that, that area of the village. If it is a problem, if it's simply that there's parking and people using it, and there isn't a problem, then...
All I'm identifying by it being an existing problem is that there's proof that this behavior occurs.
Right.
So I'm just saying this behavior is going to become worse.
Well, I can't come too much words because you're going to run out of parking, um, but it's going to increase traffic.
In that street, when they come looking for parking and they can't find it, they're going to continue to ride around trying to find the parking.
Well, I'm not sure if you got a nine o'clock pass, you got enough time to run around a few times, uh, so many times to, to do that. I know my lecture center, they, yeah, the side streets are, are filled up, um, and there's alternate side of the street parking on it, but, um, and, uh, I don't think there's any more capacity there, I'll put it that way, parking during the day. So it gets to a point that if it's filled up now, anybody who's going to drive is going to be parking further away or pushing it out.
I think, I, I agree that it's a well-used area already, but I think it's just going to increase competition. There will be more cars looking for those few spots.
And I'll say, yeah, but nine or 10 o'clock, it's filled, and you won't be able to get in after that until you prove...
Which may be even more problematic because you have more people unsuccessfully looking for spots.
How closer do they end up? Seriously, because we're touching campus.
Yeah, but all the lecture centers are more on the northern side, and that's where all these residential streets are, where they had the alternate side of the street parking. But I've been blown away, I mean, I, I see cars of college students who I know who live in town who drive surprisingly a few blocks, you know?
Hey, well, there's, you know, there's 8,000 students, we're bound to find a few of them.
This is gonna, this is going to create...
We're not social engineers, I think. We can't, we can't, we can't shape people's habits. All we can do is make the other passing individuals more available by, like, you know, bikes and sidewalks and those kind of, those direct, direct road connections, all those kinds of things.
But this is an adverse impact that, that needs to be mitigated differently than what we're currently doing.
Well, I, I, again, here...
I just think it sends on line 32 that says, "It is anticipated that the project residents will be moving to a location closer to the college and therefore reducing the overall travel of students by automobile." That's just plain not so.
Well, I, I think we're, you know, and again, just trafficking in their suits.
You got 500 people who are driving from an hour to half a week.
No, what we think, we're, you know, what do we mitigate? We're, we're trying to mitigate the use, they're, of them even bringing a car on campus. And, you know, with a fee on that, and there's a limited number of parking spaces at the site, there's, um, campus parking, any permits. There's a saturation point, um, that comes with the parking that's right by the lecture center. Uh, there just isn't any more roads and parking.
It's exceeded now.
And they're at, well, I'm just saying it's now, and then them saying, well, there'll be more people cruising around looking for parking there.
It's bad now, but it's not like trying to find a parking spot in Manhattan. Like, I, I'm saying, you know, there are, there's a continuum, and it can get worse.
Well, is that from an air quality, or should we, that be under transportation?
Well, I just think that sends, at the end of, uh, the paragraph that starts line 32 just should be straight because it just plainly falls. Well, that's the theory of the traffic study.
The mitigation is describing the traffic study.
That's what it is, that there are people living far away who will come closer. Because they are closer, they will not need to transport themselves through the village.
That's not happening.
Well, no, he's saying, instead of a resident or student driving 25 miles to school and then cruising around finding a parking space, if they drove two miles, we'll take the guy who lives in, uh, drives two miles to school.
And still cruising around looking for...
And still cruising around looking for a parking space. We've reduced it 18 miles of driving, that's, that's what the, that's what this air quality says.
That's correct.
You gotta remember, this is, this is peak, in a sense, the traffic study. We're talking about peak hour. And why is that important? That's important because both the traffic is heavier from a traffic point of view and the potential for air quality impacts are more intense at that hour as well because you have more vehicles on the road.
That's the peak hour on the weekdays that the traffic study looked at, not actually when we have traffic issues in New Falls, that we have traffic issues on Friday afternoons.
Of course, you have traffic issues for special events, you have weekends, all kinds of things.
Because this, this town is not just a college town, this town also functions on tourism.
Yeah, if you read the traffic study, there was a, there was a look at all these other time frames to the extent that was practical.
Yeah, let's not, let's, let's hold off, we're going to do transportation next. Let's just, from, from the concept point of view for air quality, what we're trying to get across here is the idea of moving 500 students from elsewhere in the county to a central location, they may now drive two miles to find a parking space closer to the lecture hall rather than 25 miles. So from that aspect, there is a mitigation of less driving around.
No, because those guys are not, those guys are still going to drive and look for these free parking spots because they're already paying for a parking permit at Park Point. So now they're competing with the, with the remaining commuters. There will be more cars on these roads, on these side streets where the village provides free parking. I mean, the optimal solution is if the village just got rid of this free parking thing.
Well, that would be beneficial for the village.
I'm already getting emailed right now.
Directing at someone, that's all I'm... Again, Paul...
Mitigation can be done by other agencies, as far as the app. So if you want to add in that.
I, I just, I, I'd rather get that into, uh, the transportation section rather than the air quality, it's more out of the fold. We can go into the transportation and say there is a limited number of parking space, free parking spaces around the campus that are presently used by students and commuters. And that we feel that this will be a, um, more, more of an impact on those limited parking spaces. And, you know, that, that, that'll, they'll run out. But we can get into, there are other steps where other agencies, uh, to minimize the amount of free parking in and around the, the campus. But here, here, all I'm, I think we're trying to get at is, is moving the 500 students closer to the school and not driving as far as they're driving, that's all the air quality is here. Will there be more local traffic and more, uh, competition for those free spots? Yes. Will they fill up earlier in the day? Yes. Will people start cruising around looking for them? Yes. But eventually behaviors change and, uh, um, you know, with, if you've done it for two weeks in a row and you've been late for class for two weeks in a row, you're going to change your behavior. That's what I was getting at.
Go take a taxi.
Take a taxi, oh, yeah, it'll be great, we'll have more taxis cruising. They'll probably take a taxi too. So I think, George, I think the only thing here on the air quality is emphasize that, the project students, the project that the residents, uh, will be relocated, relocated from elsewhere in the county, thus cutting down the amount of driving that they would do.
How far is spraying and adjacent orchards, how far does that carry over when you spray an orchard that's close to that property?
If you are... The closest orchard to this site is over 800 trees away.
Okay, there's no way.
Definitely not.
Anything else on air quality? From my own identification, the applicant will specify and utilize low VOC interior materials for construction, that's going to be part of the site plan. Uh, you know, where would I find that? That's what I'm asking. Painting, VOC materials, and things of that sort.
Your, uh, building inspector, maybe on the plans.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's on the plan.
In the specifications.
In the, in the specifications.
That's a building plan.
Right, I'm not looking for any, I just, it says the applicant will specify, I'm just trying, I didn't know where. I got two who and when and where, so that's, that's the question I had.
Why is G10 in this section?
To ensure that the conditions that are near close upon the wastewater facility transfer forward to the next owner, if and when Gossok takes...
No, I understand what G10 says, I'm just wondering why it's in this section.
Why it's in air quality?
Because some of it is, some of the conditions are air quality related, so using the activated filters or system and so on.
Oh, so this would be on anything that...
Yes, I mean, it basically says, you gotta have something which will ensure these conditions, mitigation measures, follow forward to new owners. So if there's a sale or transfer of the property to somebody else besides Gossok, there would be continuity and there would be no, uh, it's basically like a deed, to put it up record, everyone knows about it, they can inquire in there.
So is it in other sections of the finding statement?
It will be, it, it will be, if it is. But I wanted to put it at least in one place.
It seems like there may be a more appropriate place than air quality.
Well, it's, that's here to show that the air quality mitigation measures are going to continue forward, that's the purpose of it here.
Well, let's go through the whole document, you know, if we get it a couple of other places, maybe we can get a summary of a page of, uh, that statement, or if it makes sense, just plug it into each one of them. I would think it'd be great if you can wrap it all up and say, okay, it's here for air quality, this is the reasons why, here in water, this is the reasons why, so somebody can pinpoint it, uh, right away.
They're all in page one, that's actually...
Yeah, he knows they're all page one.
I wanted, trying to figure out which page I'm on.
Give me a headline. Dust Control, is that where you're at?
Yeah.
I saw that. That's, uh...
Oh, okay. No, it's, I think it's the last page.
Last page, yes.
Okay, the, um, it says, "The proposed buildings will comply with," and then there's a whole bunch of different, uh, standards, and, um...
You're in G6?
Six, yeah.
Yeah, G6.
Proposed buildings will comply with, and there's a whole bunch of standards, and, what's a standard that would be required by a state building, uh, state of New York? Like a campus building? And how's it different from the state of New York?
Sorry, we're finding the page, we already have the...
Okay, it's on page four, page four, line six.
I think in, in there, I don't have it with me, but in their response, we talked about the difference between, uh, LEEDs and the, and the NGBS. And I think there's a response in there and the comparisons.
Energy Star 3.0, I think, more than anything, sort of frames in what we need to do, and there is a certification, or a guy that basically, a professional stamps that above and below the standard, that that was followed.
Okay. And that's, the standard you'll be observing?
We need to, yeah. And, uh, Energy Star 3.0 is something we committed to, it's also, I believe, at this bike party year, town code, which is above the, the state code.
Oh, yes, okay, okay.
So, I didn't know.
Yeah, that one...
You're asking, uh, state code or like SUNY code?
Well, state would apply to SUNY buildings, I guess, state.
So is there a different state or SUNY code, or is that the same?
SUNY?
SUNY would be subject to state code.
Well, wait a minute, we're mixing apples and oranges here. Hold on, guys, there's a, go ahead, you want to do it?
I, I think it's policy with SUNY that they're using the LEED practice or the Silver practice.
Yes.
And the alternate here is NGBS, that's probably the stuff that is...
That's required, I suppose.
Yeah, but neither of those are really a code.
No, that's, as opposed to different...
Right, it's a standard that...
A certifiable standard.
Right, uh, what I was referring to is an actual building code that is a requirement... What I was referring to is an actual building code that is a requirement.
Yeah, x inches of insulation.
But somebody will certify it. Some outside person will...
He has to meet code, and he's described how he's going to meet the NGBS Silver standard and where that was equivalent with the LEEDs. You have written that up.
And as far as the energy piece of this, which sort of also goes to some air testing and the blower door test and all of that type of thing, that's a part of a code, which also, by doing that code, you're meeting a high standard. Okay? If that makes sense.
My understanding from the billing inspector is that there was criticism in the course of the public hearing that NGBS doesn't require verification or independent verification. But LEED does, because you have to pay the LEED...
Yeah, pay the LEED guy to come in and...
Check and see that you did what you said you were going to do. The billing inspector indicated to me that she would incorporate the verification process into the billing permit and CO process. So that CO, the condition of getting the CO is that you can demonstrate you have incorporated the NGBS standard as specified and required. So you have a standard, a procedure, in this case, for instance, is complying with ASHRI. The billing inspector will have control on that because the CO won't issue unless there's demonstration that they have applied. How that demonstration takes place is between the billing inspector and the applicant.
So, yeah, so if we need verification, billing inspector needs verification. It will work it out that way. And this is one of the things you can't say upfront, this condition of, because they've got to build it, to do the measurements and incorporate it. But you gave them flexibility that there are different ways to meet the Silver rating on these things and give them the flexibility to find out which one is most effective. Okay.
One more question. During construction, when you have all that, when you're moving the contaminated soil, you have all kinds of things in place for washing and workers take showers and the whole, and the trucks get washed down. What about the runoff water from there? Is that still contaminated? Does that handle specially or does it just go back into the ground?
Runoff water from the...
Yeah, showers and the washing, the trucks and all that.
I'd have to take a look and see what the requirements state, but follow whatever it is. If the reality of it is, I highly likely would...
Would that still contain contaminants, water from the washing, the trucks that carry the contaminant?
The soil that's washed off of it?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
That would be a lesser, if you're putting, you know, 10 gallons on it and you're cleaning off the truck, you're diluting the results quite a bit. But let me take out whatever, and just give you what the specifications are for that. It's just got to be some requirement already.
I don't think it's an issue, but if it is, it would be part of the requirements that we need to follow for the ECA or whoever.
We'll put that in the site plan that... Anything else here?
No, it's air quality.
Okay, so we finished air quality. Okay. All right, I think I can handle one more. Land use or transportation?
Say transportation.
Transportation? All right. Now, this has gone, yeah, this first I basically modified on, and this has gone to our traffic consultant, who's done a number of the changes on it. That's why it's longer.
LaGusta also will father it.
I think he comments on it. I think he did give, I guess, his comments in on it. Do you see his first comment, George?
Yeah, he didn't like the heading.
He liked the heading. Well...
You know, most of Ken's comments, I think, are good.
Yeah.
And then he's got a few that, he likes to do it his way.
Yeah. Well, look, it's paid consultants for.
That's true. So when you say the first comment...
The one you commented.
Substantive comment?
The one on the right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I think he's confused about if they change enrollment. I think Park Point, yeah, that question, is Park Point fully built? Will we no longer need to do study SUNY enrollment impacts? I thought we were just tying this into Phase 1, Phase 2 in the traffic studies, and that's the time period where we're looking at.
Yeah, I should have thought of that.
Okay.
George, those areas that cross out, are they...
That would be Mr. Worsted. Which I think many of those, many of those are okay, but, you know, he doesn't, he likes dots instead of numbers. So I'm not, I'll make my decision about that.
Okay. I'm just looking at...
But I just, what do you call them, dots or paragraph numbers? The critical part here for me was making sure we stated the assumptions we're relying upon.
Yep.
And that will be appearing in fiscal impact section as well, because those assumptions are important. And these, you know, they're important here, obviously, because the conclusions are reached because these assumptions are right.
I mean, I'm just not comfortable with where we say things like, "The internal connection in the sidewalk will provide safe access for cyclists and pedestrians traveling between campus and the project." Because there's no bike paths between the project and campus. There's just sharrows.
Right. Safer than being on 32, I would imagine.
What's that?
It is safer than being on 32. Perhaps it should be a relative statement, safer. Because there is, there is a speed limit here, 50 miles an hour. In theory, it will be enforced by the town police as well as SUNY police if there is... And one of the things that I'm building into, I'm not sure if it's in this section, but it's going to be addressed, is that there would be a periodic evaluation by the applicant, the SUNY police, and the town police, and other emergency service organizations about issues and concerns regarding safety. Pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. So if there is a problem with bicycle accidents, it's addressed by the respective police and the applicant in a, you know, it's, there is a mechanism, a forum in which it'll be addressed. So if the speed limit is being violated, people are driving too fast, above the posted limit, can be addressed, and whatever police enforcement is required will be presumably directed to the, to remedy the situation.
I understand that. I'm just saying, if we're going to, you know, throughout this document, we talk about, like, safe routes to and from the campus, promoting bike use. I just think that stuff is not accurate unless we have bike paths. So we should just remove that language from our document, because there are no bike paths.
No, I think the path that gets into the college itself is a shared path. It's a cross-hatch, if I recall, off the sidewalk into the campus itself.
So without a, you're talking about a bike path that's being separate?
Or like a lane, a bike lane, that's painted differently, or has rumble strips, or cones, or anything that's a designated bike path. Because, you know, promoting it as a, as a, you know, a project that's bike-friendly to and from the campus, it would need a bike path to qualify for that description, I think.
Okay. I mean, is that the board's...
I think through the process, I mean, was cutting that piece of it up and felt the opposite about it, which is why we was geared in that direction.
What do you mean, she felt the opposite?
She didn't, a separate lane versus a shared share of...
Bicycle pedestrian share?
Yeah. Not bicycle pedestrian, but road, car, car sharing.
The road sharing. She thought that having a width...
Right. Especially with non-straight parking and the angled parking, so if there's backing up and the bikes go along the side. So that's sort of what steered us in this direction. It was sort of guidance from...
How wide are they?
They're pretty wide, because we had to make them wide enough to meet a fire, which would be 20...
Fire trucks, yeah.
20 foot wide road, or each...
Each side is...
Side of it, which a standard roadway is 12 foot.
Right.
They're significantly wide, but maybe to...
Right, based on the fire truck. And I know you don't like this suggestion, but if you put the parking spots to the south and get rid of the parking spots to the north, then you have a bike lane, and then you can call it a bike-friendly project. You have those land bank spots to the south.
No, this is, no, this is the parking on the Boulevard.
This is on the Boulevard.
I know. So eliminate those, eliminate those spots as parking. You're using them.
I think they're steered in that direction, too.
What?
They're steered in that direction, too.
Let's, let's think about markings. And let's, I think comes in on that, and then have the full discussion.
Or just pick up this sentence.
I think, yeah, the width of the road is, you know, the Boulevard is conductive on it, and the extent you can put a lane near the center meeting.
Yeah.
Strip it anywhere you want.
Yeah.
Down the center.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't bike anymore. Would that be...
A bio retention.
A bike lane is...
You mean on center road.
Like on third lane.
Center of the trail.
From my understanding, the way to make bike lanes safe is then they either have to be elevated or at a different level from the cars, or create some sort of rumble strip.
All right, let's take a, let's put that on the parking lot. We'll come back to that one.
Can they just be marked as bike lanes?
So we have a discussion with the full board on the bike lanes.
Striped or marked as...
That would be better, too. But what we have now is it's just a shared road, bikes.
Well, yeah, that's, well, that's, that was what I was saying. If you had markings on it.
If you had the...
So it's better than 32 because the speed limits are.
I suppose, yeah. You won't get hurt as much. But what's on the campus? What kind of...
I don't know, but we're just promoting this as like a bike-friendly project. It either is or it is not.
There's nothing on campus, George. There's no separate bike lanes.
No separate bike paths? Because I think consistency is important, too. If you have something which is bike-friendly and then you go to a non-bike-friendly environment...
Now you sound like the guy who doesn't want to put a sidewalk in a subdivision.
No, I think what I, if I recall, you guys clarify, when SUNY showed their interconnection with your facility, they had the road and they had 10-foot section. And that was a shared, I'll call it the rail trail, it's a shared, spikes and pedestrians on it. There was no differentiation between the two on campus. That was their section.
They had that section that goes down and up to the, straight across the road from the first intersection.
Yeah.
And up to, so they have a portion where the traffic is the heaviest that has this detail to it.
But it wasn't, they didn't have a separate bike lane in it. That's what I was getting at.
A separate bike lane within the pedestrian path?
It's just a, it's a common lane, it's just wider.
It's a common lane.
Right, it's a common bike and pedestrian lane. So here we do not have that, though.
No, here we got the...
Well, up to the, up to the intersection we do on the North Head. So that section we brought up to our North intersection with the internal roads.
The internal road. You got sidewalk all the way up that way.
Yeah, that's that, that's that detail up to there on our site. We just have normal sidewalks and driving lanes.
So basically, we're talking, I think what we're getting back to is, do we stripe the 20-foot Boulevard or not stripe the 20-foot Boulevard?
I think that's a site plan.
What?
Figure that out for site plan.
We could figure that out for site plan, but I'd like to have the whole board...
I think it would make sense to stripe, I think it would make sense to stripe the center as a bike lane.
Well, let's have a special with Lynn and LaGusta and Eileen here, and then we can figure out what on site plan, what it, I think that's the best we can do on that, at least him, to give it some differentiation.
I think my, my recognition, I mean, and when she's here, we can confirm it, but I thought that she didn't like describing as much as the sharrows. That's where we got here.
Yeah, that's why we had that discussion with it. Just, let's see if we can get what the consensus of the board would be on that. Okay. Circle that sentence so we make sure we come back to it.
We're trying to just remove that safe bike passage from there.
Well, we'll close it out on one way or the other. I'm going to have a discussion now or...
It's another section, it's another section, too.
Yeah, you're talking about seven, six and seven there, versus create bike and pedestrian friendly traffic.
Yeah, we have that in that air quality one as well.
And it could just say, we'll create common car tracks. Imagine that, you know.
We finished Phase 1? We're on Page 2?
On line 13...
On Page 2?
Yeah, Page 2. That paragraph, which is, is saying that with the intersection of 32 and Platicula Avenue will experience a reduction from...
Loss of Service D to Loss of Service E.
Okay, and it would do so, okay. And then it says that agrees that the conclusion of the TIS is that the project is not caused, the impact is not caused by the project?
Right, he's saying, basically, he said that just the, in a no bill situation, if they didn't build it at all, that intersection would still go down to an E, with just the normal traffic growth.
Because of that.
Okay.
Now, if they put the science building there, who knows?
Okay, but when they did this traffic study, the expansion of the other two parking lots on campus had not been completed yet. Does anybody, do we know how many parking, additional parking spots was put on in the expansion of that parking lot?
If I recall, I thought they were doing a replacement of parking. They weren't really adding any, because they took, you know, tennis courts out to put parking there because they were moving the dorm on the existing...
No, I'm talking about the parking lots on 32.
On 32. I don't, that parking, parking lot right on Platicula and 32, that's going, right?
That's, I guess so.
Yes, that's what their future plan shows.
But they expanded the other two parking lots, so that's how to have an impact on the traffic study, and that was done after the traffic study was done. on the traffic study, and that was done after the traffic study was done.
What parking lots?
Yeah, I mean, to the extent that, you know, the parking lot of Platico goes, it's going to reduce the traffic there. Just, people won't be driving in and out of that parking lot.
Okay, but it's going to be a minimal effect, because there's still going to be coming, there's going to be traffic coming down thirty-two, where people from Platico cannot get out and make that left-hand turn, so it's not gonna, it's still, it's not going to make the impact any less, it could very well increase it.
Well, where do you want to set them? Little symbol there.
Ken, where's that?
Ken, we'll just talk about those, and see what he, I had him summarize it. But basically, just the, the no growth would make that an E, that's what he's basically saying in the paragraph. No build, I mean, no build, just normal growth on it. And I'll check the SUNY master plan on the.
On the what?
The, the parking, how they're moving the parking, have they, one-for-one, or are we expanding parking or not? I know they're moving it to the periphery, that's their plan, the college.
I would assume the, I would assume they expanded the parking when they did it, because the lot is a whole lot bigger than it was.
That's a huge lot, yep.
But I think that's in keeping with their plan to eliminate, putting the parking, taking the prime real estate where they have parking lots now on campus, like at Platico, and using those things for building sites now.
Right, but it's still going to increase the traffic on thirty-two.
We'll set it out there, yeah, probably know better than I do. No, I was just getting the answer that, if I take out twenty places here, I'm moving it out in the periphery, I'm adding twenty, or I took out twenty and I'm adding forty. I don't know if it says it that clearly on that. Okay, anything else on that page?
Two.
Two?
I'm ahead of you.
Oh, good. We'll catch up to you soon. Page three, did he take everything out?
Moved it to page, page nine.
He moved it, okay, that's, that's what I thought, I started scanning this and said, this looks familiar, and I went back and.
Right. Was the point at which I said, what are you doing?
Yeah, well, hey, anytime, anytime you're the author, and somebody hands you comments and takes out all the words you have on that page, you can kind of.
I don't mind taking out words, it's when there's a legal consequence that follows, or trying to get something nailed down, I think that's what concerns me. Feel free to take out words.
Okay.
Can we go back to page two for just a second?
Sure.
So, we could add something, line thirty-six, secondary access may also be used by town vehicles to refuel, we would put town and village?
Fire trucks.
They're the ones that's currently using it now, it's not the town.
Okay.
Village is part of the town, though.
Now, you know what, I want to add it.
Yeah, I'm bound to vote on it sometime in my lifetime, right? Okay. So, I'm on page four.
Okay, page four, line eighteen, you took a paragraph out that I think should be left in. If the town's planning to have a connection between South Puth and thirty-two, shouldn't that be at that intersection where the entrance is, and just have one intersection, instead of several intersections, just for future planning?
Where are we at, the line?
Line eighteen, four.
We.
Not a part of this project.
I know, but.
We, we.
There is a request or a requirement from DOT that the project consider how access to the property on the east would be provided, coordinated with the project entrance. And if that is a point from which your road would strike, that would presumably be a logical point for a connection, I assume.
Makes sense to me.
But that's, if the opportunity is being preserved by having the applicant demonstrate that that could work in that location, provide access to the, to the property itself, presumably overfill to.
And also about having a left-hand turn, I guess there were some space requirements.
They moved that to page, sure, page seven.
Yeah, I think he picked up page seven.
Basically moved it to page seven.
That makes sense to me, to leave that in.
Well, I picked it up, that's what he's saying.
I think he just moved to page seven.
Actually, it's, if you go to line seven on page nine. That's where, that gets picked up.
Okay.
All right, anything else on page four?
I got a question, that's right on page one.
I'm not sure if you're allowed to ask questions.
I wasn't sure if I was either, I'd ask if I could ask a question.
Go ahead.
Line fifty-four, fifty-five, the last two lines, it says the applicant, UK has advised the applicant that, one, cost increases associated with the extension of services project paid for by the applicant. Where, where's that from?
I got to read it on, but you, a letter was sent.
Gail Gallery's letter from the Falls Transportation Committee.
Okay, you pulled it out, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says here, the date of that letter sent to Tom George was May, May third, two thousand thirteen, letter from Gail Gallery to Tom George.
I just, you guys putting the sidewalk in front of Joe's house? He doesn't like sidewalks, he told me that.
He's going to have to show them.
I, debate on sidewalks, and he said.
You put it in the right order, so it's.
Okay. All right. Anything else on four? Five.
If you look at the sentence, it starts thirty-five, thirty-six.
Yep.
Maybe that's what we, what it'd be saying about bicycle and pedestrian routes that facilitate travel, not that they're safe, not that they're friendly, just for a way to get back to home.
Okay.
Which page?
Line thirty-five, thirty-six. Pedestrian and bicycle travel will be facilitated by internal connections to pedestrian, bicycle routes. Or the pedestrian, not sure if it's pedestrian, bicycle routes on campus, maybe we should just say pedestrian routes on campus.
Yeah, but bicycle, and you go on the campus, you go some route.
It must be on some route, yes, I understand.
It's also a little ambiguous, because you see and, the pedestrian and bicycle, one route, or are they separate routes?
No, on campus, it's one route.
Well, maybe I'll just say to the SUNY campus.
Do the existing bicycle, pedestrian route.
Okay, anything else on five?
Question, line forty-three, was there a reason why it only states that we'll authorize town police to enter and enforce speed limits, and not any other law enforcement agency, including SUNY?
I'm not sure SUNY has the authority, I'm not sure they have the current ability to enforce traffic regulations off the.
No, I think, I thought they can if it's, if it's adjacent.
To the college.
Because you see them all the time, they pull people over who speed adjacent to the college.
In their last contract, George did agree to any adjacent highway to the university, SUNY PD can no longer. And the same also is true, good point, you know, should share with the state troopers, if you see them pull people over everywhere.
What I'll say is, any police agency with jurisdiction.
Yeah, heck, if you want to see a guy speeding down thirty-two and makes a quick left-hand turn into this property.
There is, I know there's a hot pursuit provision in criminal law that that should go, even across county boundaries.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm saying, hey, I've got to think.
My bicycle theory.
Oh. Okay, so we'll change that. Thanks, Tom. Anything else on five? If you look down, Peter, or line twenty-three. This, this, actually, line ten goes into the connector roads between Pike Corners and thirty-two.
Well, yeah, thirty-two and two oh eight.
Yeah, well, it wasn't, it's, it's dead end there.
It really needs a connection, it's not part of the project.
Yeah, it's going to be a better word, anyhow. Okay, anything on six, I'm going to seven?
Well, well.
Okay.
I mean, exactly what are our options, line twenty-three and twenty-four, on page six, I guess. It'd be nice to have some kind of a plan for that, so that at some point, a connector road could be built between thirty-two and two oh eight.
Well, it hasn't, it doesn't rule it out, it's just that the connector road to pick up on Gross Creek is south of this site. It's even south of Bellator, isn't it? Yeah, it would be on the south side of those apartments, if you wanted to get a straight connection through. So, further development of more real property south of this is where you could probably, and maybe even find land enough to make a connection road on it, and you wouldn't involve the SUNY campus either, so it'd be.
Further down.
Further down. Then you'll have all my neighbors here. Okay, anything else on six? Seven.
I have a general question for the applicant, that these mitigation measures are things which you anticipate or plan to do? All of the mitigation that's being identified here, extending, it says the applicant will, or the applicant may, we'd like to know if you have any issues or.
Advocate.
I haven't seen anything so far that we have got to, but I think that if there is anything, we would, in the next, we just got this last night, but in the next week or so, we can get you something.
And you went to bed last night and slept too, huh, didn't you?
The one item that we, I did have concern with on page seven, I don't know, is item F, where it states for the purpose of providing parking spaces, if the planning board determines additional paid spaces are necessary. I thought, in past conversations, that was something we were going to set, something up with the building inspector, if.
Where, where are you reading?
Item F on page seven, it's line sixteen. The line seventeen of.
Oh, wrong F, I'm sorry about that, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was in the wrong spot.
I guess my concern there is, we're trying to land bake as much as possible, but I'm concerned about if more spaces are needed, based on number of students requiring parking space for a car, and we have that land banked space, I don't want to get into a, like a site plan approval process, or a planning board approval process, that, you know, these are spots that were, are required by code.
What we were going to do for that air, for that section, is lay out a guideline that you would address each of the issues, and then say, look, I've addressed this, you know, one may be violations, one may be requests, we haven't, I haven't thought it all the way through, but you, and then you would designate what ten or twenty spots in order that you would want to expand on it. That's what we're looking for, is that we would have a document that would say, this is what you had to do, had to do, had to do, had to do, fill out, and then you present that to the planning board, and these are the spots that you would go to, and the planning board would agree to using that as a basis for allocating the spots.
I guess I was just looking for something like you're saying, a more black and white.
Yeah, we have to, we have, have to design that.
But do you propose something, set it?
Yeah.
Do you see that going to the building inspector, or is that an any part of the site plan?
I would.
Made already?
I would want to, well, personally, I think I would want to, we could run it through a simplified site plan if we had an issue with it, but we would lay it out, the planning board would agree, this is what the information we would need before we would grant additional spaces. You would know what information you had to prepare for that, and if you did that, and this was, and, you know, the document would say, then we would go ahead with a, with a site plan approval.
I'm not even sure it would be a site plan approval so much as a modification.
Or a modification.
No, so it's not quite the full site plan, but it's, you have a condition which says it's going to be land banked unless we determine it's necessary, and it's, as I understand it, it would not be for the convenience of the applicant, or we could rent this for even more, we could rent the faster, we could rent, if we could provide the parking, it's, there really is an need for parking, and there are.
Well, I, I think, if we're not a hundred percent full, because we don't have additional parking, that's not the convenience, that's.
That's something beyond the convenience, but that's the case you have to make, not just, we got, you know, people want parking, so we want to put more parking. The whole idea of this is to avoid it, and mitigate, in effect mitigate some of the concern about putting parking close to the wetland buffer areas. So, if it is going to go in those areas, it needs to be done reluctantly.
As probably the last place they would add it to, we would look at.
You could prioritize.
You can prioritize it, and the first spots I would want are the furthest south as spots, but we had to work on it, we talked about some qualifications. We have a fan, and you guys would never get involved, with the simplified site plan, if you meet these minimum number of requirements, the building inspector looks it over and says, yes, 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 and then sends it into the planning board, the planning board reviews it, if it meets the requirements, we sign off on it right then, they're meeting, if not, we can go into a site plan review, because we have questions.
We would need to do a form of a simplified plan.
I'm just saying, similar to, this would be a document that would be vetted through the building inspector, and then sent to the, to the planning board to agree with it.
And that's sort of like a default, if the planning board doesn't have concern, the building inspector is free to go ahead.
But it's just.
We, we did provide some language.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's the stuff, if you're. That's, yeah, that's the stuff, if you remember that.
And we also provided the sequence in that one document.
That's what I was thinking of, just codifying, codifying that into something that we could work with together. So you know what to have to, you have to get, before you come before us. Okay? I was, yeah, I was down on my, when you were talking F, I was down on my line 46.
EV.
Yeah, the FE, that's EV.
Thank you.
How many are you putting in here? I was unclear.
Two.
Two. But the kind of, it's another equipment necessary to allow the installation of additional EV charging, will be installed in all lots serving student residents at time of construction. What you all have in mind? Yeah.
That may be mitigation, which I believe would be consistent with the EV law that's under consideration by the town now, where you have an obligation, once it goes over 20 units, you would have an obligation to review and determine if EV has been provided, and you may modify that requirement by looking at the circumstances and deciding, oh, you have to for now as a conduit, so that the actual equipment can be installed conveniently, at such time as the demand actually is there.
So, so they, and again, I remember reading the EV law and putting it in, so basically it's, you're looking at putting in a conduit.
Yes.
That's it, not running, not pulling, or anything else like that?
No, I mean, it, conduit should be the place where it can be hooked up, but that's part of our adventure here, is to consider how this is going to work.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably direct buried wire, and we just, we always said in our response there was, you know, there's, there's going to be a number of transformers and things you can pull off of throughout the project, so.
Right.
The opportunity will be there.
Put the conduit, the thing that would be under the parking, so you don't have to turn it up there, which I understand is relative to when.
I think you just, I think you just tear up a piece of sidewalk.
Why don't you guys think about it and see if you can?
I guess, rather not arbitrarily throw a conduit in, because, you know, I guess if a bunch of electric charged vehicles, that does kick off, a lot of them are used. Where we pull off and how much power we need, we might just be able to pull off at the light point. You know, there might be a lot of different ways to incorporate electric vehicle charging station at that time. I'm just saying, when we throw a conduit in there now, three years from now, no one's going to remember it's there. You know, even if it's there, someone's going to throw another one.
Yeah, you're right.
This is not a big deal.
The problem is, is the technology is, is changing as it goes in. There's a grand total of one charging station in Tulsa County at present time, and.
Because of one car?
Actually, there are five at Freedom Lane.
Inside?
For trucks, but they're not public.
Oh. Well, I, I think we got to work on that sentence. What we're looking for, how we're going to meet that. Maybe take a look at the, what do we're looking for in, in the law. I know we do.
Well, this town has a law on this.
No, we came here, I think we looked at it. That, I don't know, they, I don't think they scheduled a pub here on.
Well, when it's worked, three years ago, when we put this in, no one's even thinking about it, and you're trying to be ahead of the curve.
I know, I know, see, no good deed that goes unpunished.
Eventually the curve catches up.
On line 46, though, we did do those by the clubhouse, kind of for security reasons.
Yep.
For system reasons.
What kind are you proposing a foot there?
I'm sorry?
What kind of EV station? They come in three different categories. I'll say, what I can do is send, send you guys along if you see how it might be.
All right, so we're going to check that out and see what the law looks like and see how one would meet it. Anything else on seven? Eight?
Can you ask a question? On line 13. There's something in here about suggesting that each resident will be able to permit a numbered parking space?
Have you thought how you're going to?
Well, if you got a permanent window, then you're allowed to park.
But you're not going to number the spots? You're not looking at numbering the spots?
Some people may want to park in different areas during the, I don't know, there's different situations.
Are you going to have vehicle-specific permits then?
Pardon?
Vehicle-specific permits?
Yeah, there'll be stickers, so you stick it on.
So you can't swap out?
And those will be numbered so you can track it back to a person.
Yeah, the number, number and the make and model of the car and the person's age.
Right, and our security guys will have all that information, it's just they can park wherever, there's a free spot.
So what you do, do you restrict the other parking at those other locations you've had?
As far as?
In the same manner, do you have a parking restriction?
Sort of, they're set up a little bit differently. In Rochester, there's retail, so there's some retail areas that are completely separate. And at Syracuse, it's actually in a parking garage, so it's set up a little separately because it's in a garage and has the gate, but again, there's not specific.
Okay, but in Rochester, do you give permits to people?
Yes, yes, we do.
And that's what you're proposing here?
Yes.
Have you thought about what you'd charge, like will it, are you trying to think of like what SUNY charges for parking, or how do you figure that out?
I haven't at all. Our operations folks probably have.
Yes, yeah, how do you, yeah, I'd come to visit somebody, my daughter, at school or something like that. Is there visitor or something marked like that? Okay.
Do you figure in overnight visitors?
That's not going to be.
Well, only because you're going to have, if you have 400 spaces, then you have 400 permits, and then you do have visitors.
Well, you can't have four, that's, we have that, so visitor parking.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like a chunk of the parking lot that's just designated visitors, so it's first come, first served.
But then, at the same time on that, we, you know, we do have like security, which, you know, like a, kick your car out at a certain time, like if a car's been there for two days, it's noted that this guy doesn't have a parking pass, he's been here for two days, you know, that's what our security does.
Yeah.
So they don't become, either, it's a great way to track long time, sort of offenders, if you will, of people staying on it, but also to make sure the cars aren't just parking there.
What do you do if someone is parking there?
They'll be told, but they don't, it's one of the operations that our security can take care of.
Find out who it is?
Yeah.
Put the boot on.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on?
I guess you have a question about line 42.
Which line?
42, same 42. We're slated to do a second study at 75% occupancy. At that point, you'd be able to project what's going to happen 100%, because you have a whole bunch of data. I don't know where the two post-developing studies came from.
Well, that's a question I have, is what's your interpretation of DOT 75% occupancy? When you build out the phase two?
Well, you have to accept occupants.
No, you've got phase one, phase two.
Well, there's one, there's 75% in phase one.
So if you fill up the place, you would have reached the 75%.
That's pretty true.
I didn't, you know, again, is it, I don't want to, I'd rather see something sooner than later, because basically phase two is two, three, four years down the road. And if you got to wait till phase two to build a 75%.
Yeah, I guess the reality of it is the first year that we're open.
Expect to be there.
We expect that to be the start.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
I'd say that's a more realistic way of phrasing it. The 75% occupancy, I thought, well, if we're looking at, you know, we're hoping to be 100% occupied before it opens, so.
No, again.
Until it opens, and then it's.
Not knowing where they came up with 75, and they, the number is a, as a trigger to do the DOT study, I think what we're saying is that you're going to do the DOT study at the completion of phase one.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
And I think that's what we're.
I think it's a better way of phrasing it.
I'll look at the letter to be sure, but I thought, this is tense language, I think.
I just think it might not be as specific as it's fine.
One of the things the study, DOT has its reasons for doing the study, one of our reasons is to confirm that the assumptions in these.
I'm not trying to do a study.
No, I'm saying, we are concerned about the assumptions being valid for all phases. So it does make sense to do it after the project is fully occupied, to confirm that there is this reduction in traffic that is projected or anticipated.
I'm on the flip side of that. If there is a gap between phase one and phase two, and you do a study at the conclusion of phase one, and you, and you go, oh, I should have known that, there may be something that you can do to incorporate phase two.
You can do mitigation of both steps. But what, it's certainly going to be more relevant to phase one, because you have a new section that will be, is not yet occupied, may create some additional impact you didn't anticipate, may be able to identify mitigation at that point. But that may happen after phase two as well. There may be need for mitigation. The traffic study will identify it, how it gets accomplished, that becomes a more interesting question.
Yeah.
Well, I think what I'm saying is, well, first of all, this, this occupancy is not like an apartment out there that goes to anybody. At the beginning of the school year, they're going to occupy.
They're in.
They're in.
Come the last week in August, they're in.
They're in, so, you know, right there, it's not like you're adding a few people each week or each month, or whatever. But secondly, when you do a study at 75% or whatever the first phase is, you can project what the impact is going to be on the last 25%, because you have this bunch of data that's confirmed the trends that have occurred.
Well, we'll get back, why don't we talk to Ken, they've two things, one, even though DOT says 75%, we're going to tie the 75% as meaning after phase one.
Yes.
Tom, if we get all this information on phase one, is it data valid for predicting what 100% would be?
Or if it is, I mean, if we go through it, if that traffic study completely conforms to the traffic study that we have now, we could conclude that, yes, it is 90% of outside students are coming off the road, and all those other things that were assumed. In that case, you could say the traffic study for phase two isn't required. Doesn't mean, because you say you're going to do it, if, we can work in some language.
Okay, well, you know where you're going, but I just, you know, from Ken's perspective, we're going to do it after phase one, you guys want to do it after phase one, and we're going to, we're not talking about 75% anymore, but for DOT purposes, it will meet their requirements, and will give us the results after phase one. All I'm going to say is whether we can waive the second one, and then Ken would say whether it's predictive or not, and we can put that in there.
Right.
Okay. All right, anything else on page eight? Page nine?
If you look at line 22 and 23, that's what I'll change, the other reference to.
Town, county, state, and college?
Yes, all eight colleges.
That's it?
I am going to not do land. Land use and zoning. Yeah, so. George, we think we've, I've reached the point of brain deadness. We've done A, B, C, G, I.
My first had a couple points on, on traffic.
Yeah, she got that, I got that.
Can we just do that?
Well, she, I think we, we captured what she was trying to say.
Let's see, on page, and hers on page four, line 42.
Yeah, basically, you know, her comment on it was, the applicant is saying it refuses to contribute towards the ensuing, that the UCAT system could run a bus on weekends. I think what we have in, in here is the.
Ken's comment.
Ken's comment about Gail's letter.
So she didn't see that?
She didn't see that one, that, yeah.
So that was added later?
So, I think we covered, I could follow up with her at the next meeting, but. All right. Okay, Josh.
Okay, now, we've got some more.
I know.
For, this is the agricultural resources, the solid waste and cultural resources, cultural resources is the thing, because there is nothing.
There's no culture?
There's no culture.
There's no culture on this section.
We got no culture.
So we can take those up next time, and it can be that.
But you're going to email us too?
Yeah.
Email them as well.
Don't push her. Okay.
After this, how many more?
We're going to do the alphabet.
Still account surface water, groundwater, terrestrial ecology, community services,
I'd ask you to take a look at section K, community services. It's not ready to go out, I have a number of questions, comments, and George, I should say George, is going to do a, a second draft of it, but I want, if George wanted to get out, if anybody had anything specific in there they wanted to see, or anything specific they didn't want to see, get it to him, but there is a second draft that we will review. I don't think that.
I'm not looking for detail comment, or topical, and general concerns about.
When do you want that by?
By the end of the week.
So that's just for K? And then what's? And then what's our plan for, for the 24th? What are we going to review?
Depending on what we get out and how many we got. The ones he handed out today, land use, and I probably want to try to hit the water, groundwater...
Groundwater and surface.
Surface water.
The wetlands.
And wetlands.
Sort of integrating.
Type of thing. I think the ones he handed out today are pretty, pretty straightforward, but we'll get a listing together and we'll get that out to you.
What about, there's R, project phasing plan. We didn't do that.
No, we didn't do that.
So, did you have a chance to look at the project phasing? Is it what I tried to lay out was an outline that we need to...
I, I filled in the blanks. I think those two are true. I just, I just sent it to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, there it is. Perfect.
No major issues?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So I just, yeah, it's tough by committee as usual, but to the extent that we can, you know what you want to pick up on the documents, you write them, you mark them up, and you come prepared to, to the meetings, they'll be able to go through it a little quicker. But that's, in essence, what, what a finding statement will look like on it, and we're going to plug along on it. Technical ones, the groundwater and surface water, and more technical than anything else, right? On it, but again, from your point, read them over, circle whatever you got for it. But I'm asking you for the end of this week, if, if when you read community services before George does draft two, if there's something in there that you want in there that's not there, tell them. If there's something that's in there that you don't think belongs in there, tell them so we can get draft two as, as better, better read to everybody. Then we'll go from there.
My plan is still the 24th to talk community services, are you going to go through the rest of these first and then do that last?
Probably.
Last.
I like when you answer, when you ask me two questions, I can answer one. Are you going to do this or this? And I can say yes.
I, I think doesn't, I...
No, the idea is, yeah, we'll probably do community services last because it's going to take a little bit more work, and I really want to full-bloy on, on that here as best I can. But I think the other ones, now that we're into it, we'll go a little bit faster, knowing what it, what you're reading and what, what it looks like on it. But that's what we'll make. Motion to adjourn?
Oh, shoot.
Thank you.
Thanks for your...
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Just draft, yeah, draft, we back.
We may be here forever, that's the point. I have...
Oh, yeah.
One of the applicants coming back. I'll see if they actually have it all. Hit this.
They took the guest...
Yeah.
And...
That was right, and they just show a pad of potential stall. We gave them the same suggestion we gave them the first time. We're going back this year.